Listen. I said I had today. I went from a funeral to wake, to here. It's like crazy.
So it just gets worse and worse?
Well, it was actually, my uncle's was actually quite lovely.
Yeah.
But it was just like, you know, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
And none of, my mom is the youngest and nobody moves so quickly. So it's just like, it's crazy.
Yeah.
My aunt, he's a very good tutor. Hi Gabriella. Are you ramping me up?
Hi. How are you?
Oh Matt, I have some.
Good evening. This is the Village Council Public Workshop. The date is February 26th, 2025. The time is 7:33 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Winograd.
Here.
Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
My pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's go right to public comment.
Good evening, Amy McCambridge, Ridgewood resident. I just want to touch on the last council meeting and re-watching the comments made at the end of the meeting, I watched from home. And I just want to say, Vagianos, you, I noticed, you tend to cut off when we're talking about the turf issues, or you turn to your buddies and you're like, hey, we already voted on this, can we move along? Just because you voted on Sheddler does not mean it's set in stone at all. The public will fight back. We should demand transparency as we are. A vote does not make something permanent, especially when it's wrong. Frank, you went on again to cite the EPA study, but it's a very, very flawed study. It studied athletes, a very small amount of athletes, and their exposure was, I think, one hour a week for a small duration of time. Our athletes are spending maybe 10 to 14 hours a week on turf. And let's talk about the EPA in general, and just one major crisis of many, many crises is we have the Flint Water Crisis, where the EPA ignored lead contamination poisoning thousands of childrens. Admitted they failed, but they acted too late. And I think turf will, if we don't do something about it, it'll happen again. I could go on and on, but I won't. EPA has failed before, ignoring dangers until lives were lost. So when we cite EPA studies, let's keep that in mind. Also, and I don't mean to pick on you, you're the bee man. And you went on to say how turf would not affect the bees. The bees don't pollinate the field, you're right. But replacing living ecosystem with plastic does destroy their habitat. It contaminates the soil and accelerates climate stress. Even if grass fields aren't filled with wildflowers, they're surrounded by plants that bees rely on. And when you install turf, you wipe out everything. You create dead zones where nothing can grow and nothing can live and nothing can recover. Seventy percent of native bees nest in the ground. You don't think that all the chemicals that leach into the soil and the water will hurt them? And the heat islands, you know that they're so sensitive to temperature changes. Excessive heat disrupts bees' ability to forage, regulate their body temperature, and survive. We need bees to live, just like we need the water and the trees. Evans, you justified a couple times saying that we needed turf for the kids. We cared so much about the kids that the only way they could go outside is if we had a turf field. That is, to me, so extremely flawed. I think that's a societal problem if they're on their phones. That's an issue that has nothing to do with turf. They shouldn't be out on artificial, chemical-laden fields. If we really cared about them, we would be preserving natural grass, trees, things that are needed for their survival. So, I have 10 seconds and I have a lot more to say, but I will just say, I don't understand why we are gambling with them. Why can we not just wait for more studies to come out? Wait till Mount Sinai comes and our panel is here? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Cynthia O'Keefe, Ridgewood resident. So I also wanted to address some of the comments from last week. And I didn't compare notes with Amy, but a lot of what she said holds true. Some of the comments I made were directed at comments that were expressed at the League of Women Voters prior to the election. The question was asked specifically about Sheddler. And this is before people push that "I vote for this person" ballot, okay? A lever. And the question that was asked was about artificial turf. And the response from Frank was that the EPA said it's safe. The EPA report, once again, I will say this, I said it a few times, only was researching crumb rubber. It had nothing to do with the environment, had nothing to do with PFAS. To the quote that you, you said, Paul, that we've already voted, so it doesn't matter. It does matter, because I live next to the Sheddler property and I have a private well. And so do other residents. So it does matter. And also, Shippo wrote to the village of Ridgewood, and they expressly said that they do not recommend artificial turf. The HPO does not recommend artificial turf. We've had several products, projects referred to the Historic Sites Council for turf fields. Jennifer Lyons. Okay, so already Ridgewood has received this letter. I'm sure you can go look in your files in your database. This was many years ago, maybe an older plan, so I don't know with the newer plan and proposal that you put together, if this is just throwing spaghetti at the wall to see if it sticks. Maybe that's the approach, I don't know. What I did want to say is that I did attend the Board of Ed meeting, which I like to do, and members of a very small but growing group called the Green Club attended in person. What an impressive group of young individuals. And they are expressing their concerns about climate change. And they wanted to advocate for enhanced educational opportunities in line with Ridgewood High School's tradition of excellence. So what I say to you is like, what are we teaching our children? If we're saying, oh, it's okay, these people have private wells, we're going to put turf in anyway if Shippo approves it, don't worry. We're doing it for the kids. And then you make us feel like we're not environmentalists and we don't care about children getting outside to play on, you know, any surface. We just don't agree with turf. For health reasons, that Mount Sinai stated. We have somebody from Green Ridgewood here who also got up and spoke about the negative impacts of turf. Not to put you on the spot, but it did happen, it's on record. And, you know, these students want to advance and increase their advocacy because they believe that actions have consequences. So again, I ask you, what are we teaching the children of Ridgewood? The traditional of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Good evening, Anne Loving, Ridgewood resident. I did, we did attend the budget meeting remotely. And again, thank you for the opportunity to do so remotely. Again, I'd like to give a shout out to Councilman White. He's, you know, it's almost like the others are making fun of you for being so diligent on trying to cut corners, and I sincerely appreciate it. If you could listen to South Irving Street, you'd hear us cheering you. Couple comments. One thing is, the mayor at that budget meeting said it takes decades to replace a shade-producing tree. This was regarding a tree at Greden. So, just like to repeat that out loud. Mr. White said, "I've lived in Ridgewood long enough to know you don't mess with trees." Again, what I just said. Another question was, I may have misheard this, but I believe they're supposed to be an 87, or they're requesting an $87,000 increase in the crossing guard salary. I may not have heard the whole discussion, but I'd love some clarification on that because that seemed really excessive for that particular thing. And then there's a recurring issue that has been suggested to this council in the past, or to most of this council in the past, and it has been ignored. Residents who serve on boards and committees should be paying their property taxes. It makes no sense that someone who deliberately does not pay their property taxes should have any ability to suggest how our tax dollars are spent. I'd really like to hear a specific explanation as to why this procedure continues and why it doesn't become a hard and fast rule that not only to serve on boards and committees, but to serve on the council, you should be paying your property taxes. It's really an affront to all of us who do pay our taxes, because that's what runs the town. So I'd love an explanation for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll go to our hybrid access. Rurik, you're up. You're on mute. There you go.
Yeah, Rurik, Halaby Village resident. A few months ago, Ridgewood Water approached the, about maybe 10 or 12 homes in the area it serves, who have, do not, are not connected to Ridgewood Water and subsist on wells. I think if you have a well, and especially if you're close to Route 17, especially if you're close to an area that, where companies use chemicals, you have a far more serious problem than any PFAS that might run off an artificial turf field, if you will. And I think our very able village manager should probably approach the state Health Department to require people who have wells to actually connect to Ridgewood Water. That should not cost much. That should not cost much. I remember when we moved to Ridgewood, we didn't have sewers. They connected us to sewers, and the cost was a few dollars a month, if you will. So I really think it's a non-issue. If you have a well, do not complain about any PFAS that might run into your well, because the problems you have are far more serious. And it's an accumulation of centuries of abuse of the land by the settlers and the industries, et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to ask the village manager to connect with the State Health Department to see if people who are on wells are required to connect to Ridgewood Water. Thank you.
Thank you, Rurik. Seeing no one else, we're going to close public comment, and we will go to our village manager's report.
Mayor, in response to public comment, I just have two.
Oh, and forgive me, forgive me. Does anybody have any response to any of the comments made at public comment?
Nope. So just, just two items, if I may, Mayor. One, to Cynthia. I have never read anything where Shippo has declared their stance against turf. If you have something that indicates that, I'd love for you to share me a copy. It sounds like whatever you were reading from predated my employment here, so I don't think I've ever been privy to that. But I can tell you that in, in talking to Jennifer Lyons and other staff members at the State Historic Preservation Office, and also talking to our engineering staff, our engineering consultant, and our historic preservation consultant, turf fields have been approved on Shippo-regulated properties throughout the state of New Jersey. The one that comes to mind, right off the top of my head, is Goffelbrook Park, which is part of the Passaic County Park System, which is a Shippo-regulated property and has a full-sided, multipurpose turf field in the heart of Goffelbrook Park. So I would love to read that, just so I can get some perspective as to where you're coming from and just better understand what they were trying to convey. But I've never read anything that, that indicated that. Ms. Loving, to your point about the crossing guards, there is approximately an $80,000 increase in that line item. That is due to a 1.5% increase in the overall contract. And it's due to two new posts that were added at the request of the public, and I believe also requested by the school district, although I need to confirm that with Chief Lyons. And those are located on Dorremus and Clinton Avenues. Those are the two new posts that allot for the increase in that particular line item. So I hope that clarifies that.
Anybody else? Now, let's go to our village manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Very pleased to report that the Habernicle Pavilion has started to be built up at Habernicle Park. We are working with Yovan and Chris in our engineering department, along with Nancy Bigos and Matt Andrula over in Parks. We anticipate that this will be constructed just about the time that we start the spring sports season. So we're looking forward to having that new amenity to provide shade and also to provide cover in inclement weather. So we're working through that project as we speak. Tomorrow is the next budget meeting, it'll start here at 5:00 PM. We have started the process of taking all of the discussion points that have been made over the last three budget meetings. And we're sitting down with each of the departments, reviewing the council feedback. We're talking about, to the department heads, about where there are possibilities to make additional cuts or maybe reprioritize for next year's budget rather than this year's budget. And we are working through that process as we speak. We have met with two sound vendors. I've been able to attend both meetings with our IT Director Dylan Hanson to review the sound quality in this room. So both have done an assessment of both the dynamics at the dais and then also the backup in the, in the, in the audio room. And they will both be submitting reports and recommendations for how we overall improve the sound quality in the room. And we also have to take into account the court system, because the court uses the dial-up for translation services. So we're trying to incorporate that into this proposal so that the translation services can be connected with the audio, so everyone in the room can hear during a court session. And finally, the ordinance working group met last Friday. We have on for discussion tonight, the wildlife feeding ordinance, which the ordinance working group's been working on for some time. And then at our next council meeting, next Wednesday, we'll be talking about an annual licensing permit for the Health Department, an e-bike ordinance, which is being created through the efforts of Matt Rogers and our Police Department, the tree ordinance, which is going to be reintroduced after we postponed that vote at the last public meeting, and also the lead service line ordinance, which the council asked for a little more due diligence on from Ridgewood Water. So those will all be on next week's agenda. Just a few announcements. The Ridgewood Health Department will be hosting a blood drive this coming Friday, February 28th, from noon to 6:00 PM downstairs in Village Hall and the Youth Lounge. To sign up, please text or call 646-656-5798 in order to schedule an appointment. Please join the Ridgewood Parks and Recreation Department on their upcoming trip to the Philadelphia Flower Show on Tuesday, March 4th. Tickets for this field trip are $80, which includes admission and bus transportation. It'll depart from the Greden Pool parking lot at 7:45 AM and return at approximately 5:30 PM. Those interested can register on Community Pass. Council chat will be held on March 8th from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM in the Caucus Room on Level 4 of the Village Hall. Call for reservations, please contact the Clerk's Office. Walk-ins are welcome, however, reservations have priority. Also, out of the Parks Department, we'll be holding a seasonal summer job fair on Wednesday, March 12th, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM in the community center at Village Hall on the first floor. This is for young adults ages 16 and older who are looking to explore full-time and part-time employment opportunities over the summer with our Recreation and Parks Department. For information, folks can call 201-670-5560. Village Council meetings upcoming, March 5th. Village Council work session, 7:30 PM. March 12th, public meeting, 7:30 PM. And March 26th is our work session at 7:30. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thanks, Keith. And we'll go to council reports. Siobhan?
Sure. So before I begin, can everybody hear me? Okay, if you can't hear me, and Evan and I went over this, stand up. You know, give us a visual. I am sort of double-miked up here in a random way. So if I turn this way, it might be picked up. But, you know, tap your ear, stand up, give us a wave. It's very important, you know, that we're heard. And if you're having trouble from your area too, you might, when we were doing the testing, want to try a different seat and move around and see if space is, it's better anywhere else. So that's, as long as it's thumbs up. And that goes for Evan too, but he's not going to be as bold. So Shade Tree, Shade Tree was canceled. Now you can hear me twice, right? Shade Tree was canceled, but I did want to give everybody a little bit of update that they will be, Shade Trees represented this year at Super Science Saturday. So if you're not doing anything, you should attend Super Science Saturday, and they are stressing the value of big trees. Thank you to Deb for doing that. I also want to let everybody know that Shade Tree is undergoing core training, which means our volunteers will now be trained through Rutgers. We're going to take seven hours of classes about trees, their care, their maintenance. Because Chris is here, I have a ringer of a question of what is a conifer and a deciduous tree? And that's the question for the dais, because there's only one that I've been able to find.
Deciduous conifer?
Yes. Chris knows the answer. We also met with Stigma Free, and Stigma Free is doing some exciting things. We're adding the tagline, as I said, of, while we're proud to be stigma-free, we're striving to be stigma-free. And that's going to be a huge part of our push, which we'll release online in May. And I think the discussion pretty much centers around that stigma-free is a statement, but it's a process and a conversation and a journey, and what does that mean? Dawn is here. We have partnered with other community partners, and we met with the Lighthouse Foundation, who has a monthly theme that we're going to be incorporating some of that here. A huge part of what we're talking about is not just stigma-free, but wellness. And, you know, we need to be symbolic of wellness, which means Mayor Vagianos, after two hours, we have to stand up and do a stretch. So you'll be hearing more about Stigma Free, the Lighthouse Initiative, and some of our rebranding. We also had a meeting with Access, where we were lucky to host Tracy Zar from the county. And this was incredibly important, because the swings, the inclusivity swings at the Dakpan have been broken, and we're very grateful to Keith and the county for getting them fixed. Not only is it important for the kids who are disabled for those swings, but for the siblings that accompany them to the park, they're incredibly critical. but for the siblings that accompany them to the park, they're incredibly critical. And Camp Sunshine being there, they're really important. So I want to say thank you to the county, the advocacy of Access that made that happen, and to this council, the importance of having an inclusive playground. And Access is also interested, as many of you know, there was a terrible tragedy that could have been way worse in the village last year, and each of our committees are taking CPR. So Access will go next. For anybody who's on any committee, we're trying to do it committee-wise, so Open Space has been, Parks has been, Frank and I are now certified. We're going to be sending Access next. If anybody's interested in this, it's wonderful to know CPR, because the more people that know CPR, the more likely we are to save people. And because we and our committees meet in common space, we thought that was a nice way to start. So if anybody has any questions or wants to be included in that, Access will go next. And I wanted to give a big shout out to, we have a new chair and a new vice chair at Access. So Jamie Davis, who's pretty much amazing, has agreed to be the chair, and Jesse Swartzman is going to be the vice chair. So this is great. Since the passing of Inez, we have really not had a chair. We've all been carrying it. And now that it's a new year, they were unanimously voted on, and I want to, I think the whole council wants to wish them the best of luck and thank them for doing their part. And then yesterday, we had a meeting with Project Pride, which they, too, are going through a rebranding. We feel that the duality of Pride in print is causing confusion, whether it's Pride LGBTQ+, or Pride meaning Project Pride. So we are considering new names, and that will be implemented this year via resolution. We also are working on two things. There's going to be new planters in town, which will be larger and need less watering, which is great, and that's our first priority. We've had several taken out by cars and damaging things. Our second priority is exploring the holidays. And you may have noticed one lone decorated flagpole, like, light lamppost with soft lights. So we're going to be working on getting a cost to see, similar to how Hocus had their lamppost decorated, that's part of what we want to do within Pride. I want to thank Chris, because he's here, and Signal for doing the demo. And if anybody has any other ideas how to enhance downtown with either green space or soft winter lighting, we'd be welcome to that. We're also welcome to donations, because we, when you get into decorating a whole town, it gets really expensive. So if anybody in the council wants to donate to Project Pride, we'd be willing to. It's very important for maintaining a vital and vibrant downtown. And that's it.
Thanks, Siobhan. Frank?
Yes. So my committees all met since last. So starting with the Ridgewood Arts Council, which met on February 11th, and talked about some upcoming events. The first of which is Children in the Arts, which will be on March 30th at the Stable. And these are different kids that do acting and music, et cetera. And we'll talk about how they got into it and what they get out of it. Also talked about the Arts Council Artist Talk, which is on April 24th in the Ridgewood Library, and it's going to be John Luckinbill from the Ridgewood High School Band Director. And then finally, we just brainstormed on how we can attract more grants and funding to increase the arts here in town. And Arts Council will be at the Daffodil Festival, so look for them there. Open Space met on February 13th. It's a good warm-up for Valentine's Day. And we first welcomed our new member, Alex Pastore. And then we discussed, last year, we did Parks Walks. Pam, I think you were a part of that. And those were so successful, so we're going to be doing those again. And then we were brainstorming, like, how to get the word out about those as well as some of the cool places here in town. So we're going to be launching a new media, social media campaign called Where in the Wood? And so it'll show different areas around town, and then people can guess on it and stuff like that where it is, and just show what a beautiful community that we have. We also talked about the Green Acres diversion, and the final appraisal of that will be coming in the next few weeks, and then we can go finally get to step two and get this resolved. So we're excited about that. Open Space, based on the name alone, you can guess that they were thrilled that the town garage was torn down. And they just want to take an active role in what happens next, and they want to do that by engaging with our residents and find out what people think should go there and just get some more ideas. And then finally, that, you know, just as a reminder that the Open Space Assessment, which, you know, it's like a half a cent of every $100 we're assessed, goes specifically to the Open Space Fund, and that fund was used to buy Habernacle, and that has now been paid off, which is exciting news for all of us. And so there's going to be different things to celebrate that in 2025, so stay tuned. And Open Space Surprise will be at Daffodil Festival as well. And the other cool thing, and this goes across Open Space as well as Parks and Rec, it's a proposal for a trail plan that we have four different parks that used to have trails or had never had trails, and they're really in bad shape. So there's a proposal on how we can go back in there and, and fix them up so people could utilize them more efficiently. Citizen Safety Group met on February 20th, and I'm thrilled to be on this committee. I just am really enjoying it. This past meeting, we had probably close to 20 people from Ridgewood residents that showed up, and it's just awesome that so many people are, are coming there and being involved in the community. So really want to thank everybody that's doing that. I also want to give a shout out to the Ridgewood Police Department and the Engineering Department because they're part of that meeting, and they provide a lot of real data and information to our residents, and they do a great job doing that. So thank you to both of those departments. Some of the updates we discussed was traffic concerns on West Saddle River Road, site triangle obstructions in the village, and the intersection of East Glen and Oak. We also talked about sidewalks on West Glen. There were some residents that showed up about that. And so we're going to be recommunicating with those residents about what next steps and where we are. In the Central Business District, happy to report that the stoplight at Oak and Franklin has been made longer for the folks on Oak. Now, I'm at that intersection a lot, so I thought I was just getting lucky, but apparently that the light is now longer, which is mostly so pedestrians can cross in, in plenty of time. We also talked about there was an accident on Highwood Ave, where there's the Friends Preschool, and so just discussed about how do we make traffic more mindful to slow down. And the same is true. There was an accident at Kennelworth and Laurel, and that's where most of these neighbors came from that were at the meeting to talk about their concerns. And so Ridgewood PD and Engineering had provided some recommendations, which included LED stop signs and one of those big painted stop signs in the, in the road itself. But I would like to say that from going to that intersection to look at it myself, there's a lot of speeding on Kennelworth. And so I would just ask all residents to please be mindful of the 25 miles an hour, and let's just slow down to protect everybody. And then there was also some public comment about safety at the park and ride on Route 17, which part of the comment was including that there was no sidewalks on Race Track Road, which I do think that we should look at for our residents as well as all the people that use the park and ride. And last night that we had our, my favorite, Parks and Rec Committee, Stacy from the Health Barn was there, and this is her 10-year anniversary of Health Barn being in Ridgewood. Health Barn is 20 years old, and she's been here at Ridgewood for 10. So she slash we will be planning some very cool things to celebrate her anniversary, so stay tuned for that. Pete, I'm sorry, Keith stole my thunder on the job fair on March 12th, so I'd like to say that again. And then I will steal Pam's as well, because, and for the third or fourth time tonight, I'm saying the Earth Del, Earth Day Daffodil Festival is April 27th. This year's theme is H2 Optimize and How to Protect Our Water. And I'd like to go on record as saying that this is probably my favorite event here in the village. It's just so, I think everyone spends all winter inside, and this is the first time that we're all outside. So, and everyone's very happy. So if you haven't been, would recommend going there. Then we also talked about different parks. Again, Keith, thanks for stealing my thunder, that the pavilion is going on at Habernacle, which is great to say as many times as we can. And we also talked about the lighting events, the Hawes, Lower Hawes Field was, you know, the sodding and that, and how that's looking so great. The winter programs that the Parks and Rec Department has done. And remember, Parks and Rec really touches, of all the things in town, touches more residents than anybody else. And it's just amazing that they're able to put on the, the quality and quantity of programs that they do. So shout out to the Parks and Rec Department. And then finally, we talked about the community center and things that we can do there to continue to bring great programs to our seniors. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Frank. Pam?
Oh, okay. I had the pleasure of attending a celebration for Black History Month in the community center, put, organized by Deanna Shablack. And the topic was Motown, how the company was formed by Barry Gordy, and it was once, one, the biggest music company in the country. So we got to move to Martha Reeves and the Vandellas, and Donna Summer, and the Temptations. And it was a wonderful, historic, and fun presentation by a professor from Bergen Community College. With regard to Earth Day, I did want to remind everybody who has a dog, if you want to be in the Daffy Dog Parade, your pooch will need a costume. That's at 12:30 on April 27th. I'm so excited about the pavilion. In my mind's eye, I see a square dance. So if nobody else plans it, I will.
I'm in.
Parks and Rec Committee met with Green Ridgewood, and we held a joint meeting to strategize next steps on rain barrels and rain gardens. The planning board met for its reorganization meeting. We had no applications, however. So there was nothing really substantive that went on. Let's see. The Steering Committee for Exploring Whether We Could Set Up a Special Improvement District in Ridgewood continues to meet, and we will meet again on Monday, the 3rd. The Central Business District Committee met, and Chris Rudershauser came to speak to the group about contamination at 132 and 120 Franklin Avenue. That's the town garage site and the village, what was the village parking lot. And also, the village manager came to talk to us about what's going on with the bus station. And then I did, I learn things about our village every, every week, and this week I learned that shredded paper can go in with your regular paper recycling at the curb. Other towns don't accept shredded paper, but we do. So bear that in mind. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Pam. Evan?
So I'm not nearly as prolific, apparently, as my fellow council members. My only board that met was the library, which I enjoy immensely. Draw your attention to ton of building renovations going on. The mezzanine was complete, study rooms are done, being well-used. There's a new camera system installed, and there's planning underway to redo the auditorium, redo some bathrooms, and they're actually putting in new HVAC. The best part about all this is the majority was paid for by the Ridgewood Library Foundation, the Friends of the Library, which I love, because as some of you who are watching the budget meeting heard, the library basically asked for the minimum amount of money that they're to be afforded under law. So basically, they're asking for no more than, than what we're required to give them. Another reason why the Ridgewood Library is not only a gem, it's extraordinarily well-run and really a great, great committee for me to be on. Other than that, again, just want to thank Keith and your entire staff for the budget meetings. You know, sometimes we have our differences, but they're remarkably well-run. The material is well-done. The integrity of the process is, is beyond any doubt. And I know that we're all privileged to have your staff here, Keith, doing the job that they're doing, so that we can have the conversations that we have. So I got.
Thanks, Evan. Did you want to say something?
Can I bring up the, our presenters from Green Ridgewood?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's next on our agenda. I'll call up David Refkin, the Chair of Green Ridgewood, and Beth Kreller, our Vice Chair, for their annual update on what's going on at Green Ridgewood.
Welcome. And before you say anything, I just want to thank you for all the important work you do for our village as volunteers. It means so much to the 26,000 residents here. So, so glad you're here.
Well, thank you much, and thanks for the opportunity. And it was almost exactly a year ago that we spoke about our recommendations about flooding, among other things. So we're going to go through several things. Thank you. Totally forgot about that. Okay, so, so quickly, I'll speak as fast as I can. We're going to review the 2024 initiatives and then talk about where we're focusing our efforts on 2025. So we'll talk, we're going to go over the flooding recommendations and why it's so important that we continue to, to address this issue. The Columbia graduate students gave us a sustainability roadmap, Climate Fresh, our quarterly newsletter, which we now have done four of, Slow Mo May and Leave the Leaves, our first annual Earth Day Student Art Contest, which Beth will talk about, and then also she'll talk about the Community Energy Planning Grant that we, were awarded, which will help us measure our energy usage. And then for this year, we're going to talk about a whole variety of issues that we're focusing on, implementing the flooding recommendations, the, the grant from the state of New Jer, from Sustainable New Jersey, measuring ours to help us measure our energy use, a potential Columbia second project focused on the Saddle River Park. You know, this is a gem of a park. I'm there, often riding my bicycle. The place is just falling apart. It is just, I just rode, rode my bike yesterday. It is just sad to see what's going on, that we really need help from the county and the state DEP to, to address that. And we're working with other communities along the river to help make that happen. We have joint projects we're talking about with the Board of Ed and Parks and Rec, which Pam mentioned, and also water conservation communication, and Reduce, Replace, and Relax. So moving on, our, so I'm not going to go through all of these, but this was the 20-point plan that we presented last year. And the key here was to say there is no silver bullet. Of course, we had had three, nearly four, in train storms in a short period of time, some really bad flooding. We're living through a drought right now. We've had six months of drought. We're about more than 40% below where we should be since the end of August, so we have to think about that, too. And what we're seeing is more and more extreme weather, flooding, drought, one after another. So some of the key things that we think that we need to be looking at as we continue our efforts to, to minimize the risk of flooding would include increasing wetland capacity. There's just nowhere for the water to go. We need more places for that. Installing detention and retention bases, and that's, basins, and that's really important because more than 40% of our town is paved over, like a lot of northern New Jersey. Explore Bergen County-wide solutions up and down the stream. I've told, I have to tell you, I've been to a few Bergen County Commissioners' meetings. I really tried to make this happen. It's been a challenge to get the county to be part of this. We really need their help, and they, they own that park, and they really should be focused more on it, repairs, and turning it into something really special. And then, of course, with the help of, with our, our village manager, we've engaged the Army Corps of Engineers, which is great. Study is step one. When is it going to happen? Things tend to move slowly, and let's just hope it's not on the chopping block, as the federal budget is under massive review, needless to say. If we go to the next slide, employing stormwater velocity reducers, that's something that helps reduce flooding. Rain gardens. We're really focusing on rain gardens, trying to install them in public places. We've, we're also talking to Houses of Worship to see if they want to install rain gardens. Expanding the tree canopy has multiple benefits related to climate and rainfall, flooding. And last, on the third slide, we all worked very hard. Shout out to Joan Ubertis, who really led our efforts here. But I believe we're the only community in Bergen County with enhanced stormwater ordinance. We spent many months working on this together with the mayor, with Keith and others, and we, we came up with something that's really, really positive. And if people are going to expand the cover outside their house, they need to come up with a remedy. There's other things that we did through that, but that's really some leadership things that we accomplished this year. Permeable pavement. This is something that we, that we ask developers to do all the time, and candidly, we should be looking at it when we're paving our own streets also. The permitting process, when we have planning board meetings here, I tend to be a pain in the neck, and I ask everybody, what are you doing about permeable pavement? What are you doing about trees? What are you doing to make sure we don't have more flooding, because you want to build your property? We need to be thinking more about that. And then last, promoting business and homeowner education. And I will tell you, one thing we'll be doing in October is we will have a training program for landscapers, so that they will learn how to install rain gardens. We're doing this with the Rutgers Cooperative Extension. This is a, a business opportunity for the landscapers, and also will help our village install more rain gardens. So that's it on the flooding recs.
So tell your landscaper that there's training for, for rain gardens in October.
Yes.
David, because the-
David, because the, do you want to just tell everybody what a rain garden is, just quickly? Because, and we do have one at Haverickel, just worth mentioning, because sometimes I say, oh, a rain garden, people think it's a place where it actually rains, but it's a garden that's depressed in the ground, and it's used as a water receptacle, and it can retain more water. So if you want to see one in the center part of Haverickel, where you pull the roundabout turn, there's one there. And I don't know where the second one is.
Over by Grayden.
Right. And the high school, the students have, are building a couple of them also.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not a perfect solution, but again, there's no one silver bullet. We need to do many of these things to reduce our risk from flooding. So I just want to quickly mention Columbia University. They did really a very thorough, tremendous job for us. They gave us an 82-page sustainability roadmap. Their focus was issues around flooding, around decarbonization, and about best practices, measuring our usage of energy, of water, and also financially, how can we pay for these programs? I'm just going to quickly mention the key recommendations that they came up with, short-term recommendations, rain barrels. Rain barrels really work better for drought than for flooding, but they're useful overall. And when these recommendations came out, who knew that we'd have no rain from August 30th through November 17th or something like that? So we're really going to try to push rain barrels in the spring, great time to put them in. Thank you, Siobhan and Frank, for the work you did getting this started, but that's going to be an emphasis this year, including at the Daffodil Festival Earth Day Fair. The medium-term recommendation was underground detention basins, again, something we need to think about, and long-term river redirection, and that's where the Army Corps and their work comes into play. And Beth is going to take us through the decarbonization, short-term, medium-term, and long-term.
So in theory, power purchase agreements.
Beth, can you see if that's on? Looking, see if there's a green light at the bottom?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thanks for having us. So in theory, power purchase agreements are a short-term solution, but with the way the energy markets are right now, it's just not recommended at this time. So it's something we want to leave on the table whenever the market is more beneficial for us. Two things we are considering, and we'll talk about the grant a little bit on the next slide, are electrification for the municipal fleet and encouraging private electrification if it makes sense to do so from a purchasing point of view, and then also creating opportunities for renewable energy within the village. So last year, we were awarded a planning grant around community energy projects. So there's different categories of renewable energy projects, and receiving this grant allows us to brainstorm with the public amongst ourselves, pulling recommendations from the most recent master plan to understand what might be right for our village. This is just a planning grant. So if we submit these projects to Sustainable Jersey, this opens us up to at least $250,000 to implement one or more of these projects. That also opens us up to more grant opportunities. So we've really taken a concerted effort to understand, not just within the expertise of Green Ridgewood, but with, within some of the other processes and reports that have come out that we put together. So again, looking at the master plan, what were some of those recommendations. We also held an open brainstorm meeting last month, right before our regular Green Ridgewood meeting that was open to the public, just to hear from them. You know, what are some renewable energy ideas that you have for the village? So we're in the process of consolidating that, putting it all together. Thank you, Pam, for helping us with the great application portion. So at the end of the year, we'll be able to submit these brainstorm ideas to Sustainable Jersey for consideration, and then that will open us up to so much more money to implement some of these project ideas. Some of the things that we're considering are more EV charging stations, renewable energy like solar around municipal locations. We're not limiting ourselves. We have a very long list, and we'll just see what happens.
Okay. And I forgot to just give a shout out to Alina Mortkevich, who contacted Columbia University. She's a graduate of the program, and through her, we got this very large consulting opportunity with Columbia. So other 2024 accomplishments, we had two climate fresks, which is climate change education, which was really well-received. We'd like to do more of those in the future. We've now published three quarterly newsletters. Actually, we've now published four of them. Justin Manger has been our editor there and does an amazing job. We're educating the residents, and I will tell you, other communities have asked me, what are you guys doing on a quarterly basis? We'd love to see it because they know it's, we're doing some great work there. And then Mike Farady and the Green Team have promoted Slow Mo May, as in mowing every other week. I know I only mowed my lawn six or seven times last year. You really don't need to mow it every week. Leave the Leaves, especially in tree beds and beyond. And then, of course, the Daffodil Festival and the Earth Day Fair, and Beth did a great job with the schools on art posters. Want to just mention that?
Oh, yeah. So we're going to have a second annual art contest. This is open to all of our elementary students. We had over 80 children participate last year, and awarded a first, second, and third prize. And then we displayed all of the submissions around town for the remainder of the month. So it was nice just to see how our children interpret what Earth Day means to them. And this year, with our focus on water, I'm actually going into a couple of the schools to talk about water conservation, how we can be better stewards of our water, and just use it more responsibly at home, and how that can contribute to our overall better management of water as a very precious resource.
And I just add that our high school students are doing amazing things on climate change. The enrollment in the AP Environmental Studies Program doubled this year, and yes, they were at the Board of Ed the other night saying, we want more organized climate change education, which is mandated by the state, but they don't provide any guidance on that. So thanks, Beth.
That's where we have to give Mr. Liu a shout-out.
Yeah.
Because he's amazing. I want to go back to high school and take his class.
Yes.
Miles Liu is the Ridgewood High School liaison to Green Ridgewood.
Yep. And I mean, we sometimes have seven students at our meetings. It's awesome. So moving to 2025, so our focus is many. Number one, implement additional flooding recommendations, so rain gardens, rain barrels, working with the Army Corps of Engineer Project, and then landscaper training, as I mentioned, with Rutgers. We're utilizing the Sustainable New Jersey Grant, getting a better handle on our energy use. We know that there's money we can save. We have some buildings more efficient, some buildings less efficient. If we measure, we can do, and there are opportunities for additional grants in the future. I mentioned this potential second project with Columbia around the Saddle River Park. And then we're, we're going to spend more time on gas-powered leaf blowers. What are the public health concerns around them, especially two-stroke gas leaf blowers? You may have heard the statistic, that one hour of using a two-stroke gas leaf blower is equal to driving 1,100 miles a vehicle. There's also noise, there's stress. A lot of residents have real issues around this. So we want, we're going to learn more about the public health issues. Maybe we can do less. And obviously, the issues are air pollution, noise, stress, and stress is becoming more and more of a public health issue. So this is going to be a focus in 2025. And moving on to one more page here, so it's been mentioned, we're working on joint projects with the Board of Ed and Parks and Rec, focused on energy efficiency, maybe even using electric buses so that we don't have so many cars going and transporting children to school every day. Rain barrels and rain gardens, and we've, Joan has found some new grasses that require less mowing and use less water, and they're going to be testing that out at the high school shortly. And then Beth, again, will be organizing the student art contest. As was mentioned, the theme of the Daffodil Festival Earth Day Fair will be water conservation, H2 optimized, and we've been working with Rich Calby and his staff on making sure that the messaging that Ridgewood Water has is clear and helpful, and I think we all, we're all kind of frustrated when we hear people complain because Ridgewood Water is doing amazing stuff. So we're working together on communication. And then last, Mike Farady came up with Reduce, Replace, and Relax as our secondary theme for the Daffodil Festival Earth Day Fair. And basically, it's, you know, can we be using less leaf blowers, less two-stroke leaf blowers? Can we do mowing less frequently? So that's the Reduce. And Replace, replace gas with electric-powered tools, save time and money. And then Relax, basically a healthier and quieter Ridgewood. And last but not least, we're also working on developing a new website. And I just want to thank all the members of Green Ridgewood and the citizens who show up at our meetings. We get 23, 25 people on a regular basis. This is an amazing group of people. They are very dedicated, very passionate, and we've set up these seven committees. The committees meet between our regular meetings, and we're accomplished, we've accomplished a lot, and we look forward to doing more in 2025, and we thank the Village Council for all your cooperation.
Thank you, David and Beth. It's really hard to keep up with you guys.
This is incredibly impressive. I mean, the work that you guys put into this is really amazing, and I know that you were trying to go through this very quickly, but there's so much accomplishment, it's really hard to get it all in. So really, thank you so much for this really important work for all of us.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, pivoting to the discussion portion of the agenda, we have Ridgewood Water with five items tonight, so I'd ask Director Calby to come up, speak to each.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Calby. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Very well.
Good. Excuse me. Okay. We have five, five items on for tonight for Ridgewood Water. The first is a notice of award for purchase of corrosion control chemicals. This is a Charis 4500 chemical, different from what was originally approved. This is specifically for our Passaic Valley Water Commission Interconnect. Passaic Valley Water Commission has an open water reservoir that is not treated for corrosion. As a result, when we purchase their water, we do add corrosion control inhibitor, and we utilize a chemical that's been studied and recommended by them. So it's different from the chemical we utilize in our distribution system. It's specific to the water, but we did study the mix to it with our system. So this is a recommendation of that award to buy the chemical from Charis in the amount of $12,805.59, and this is funded out of the water operating budget.
Questions? Let's go.
The second item is the award of a contract for leak detection services. We solicited three quotes to receive. The firm of FSC Leak Detection was the low in the amount of $19,800. This will be for leak detection on 88 miles of pipe in the distribution system, or about a third of the system. This work will be done at night. They utilize acoustical equipment, actually listen to the system at night when it's quiet, there's no cars on the road, and try to pinpoint if there's any leaks. We'll be focusing specifically on the intermediate zone where we had the two pressure issues this past fall, and this is funded out of the water utility operating budget.
Questions?
So at night, they listen, and they can tell if it's leaking based on how?
Yes, they use acoustical equipment, and they can hear the sound of the leak, and they can then pinpoint within a matter of feet where.
I'm sorry, this is just kind of cool, so that's why I'm asking the questions.
It is. It's very neat.
So is it like back in headquarters they're listening, or they like go around and drive around?
No, they have equipment in the field. It's not remoted back to us, but there are systems like that available.
That's awesome.
Anybody else? Good.
Next item is the award of year two of a two-year contract for HVAC maintenance and repair services. This is for several facilities Ridgewood Water operates. It's for maintenance of the heating and cooling systems. It's a not-to-exceed amount of $55,000, and this is also funded out of the water utility operating budget, and it's to the firm Unitemp Mechanical Degrees LLC.
And on this, the deputy mayor asked for a detail of all the facilities this would effectuate, so if any of the council members want it, just ask me offline, and I'll be forward to share that list that identifies which buildings and which operational plants are going to be affected by this contract.
And Rich, I think you told me that since the Village Hall will no longer be part of this contract as it was in the first year, that they're going to give us a rebate?
Yes, we're going to get a credit on the disservice portion of the contract. The allowance portion for repairs will remain in place.
Anybody else?
Okay, the next item is the award of a professional services contract for the Construction Administration and Inspection Services for the final three PFOS treatment facilities, being the East Side Facility, which is in Ridgewood, the main facility, and Glen Rock, and Mountain, which is in Whiteclough. This is a recommendation to the firm Arcadish US Inc. in the amount of $1,498,278.61. These are the services to administer the construction of each project, and provide infield inspection services for each project that are required by the I-Bank as part of our funding mechanism in our loan. This is funded out of the water utility capital budget.
Questions?
And Mayor, if I may, I just, this is a milestone. This is really the first step in moving towards awarding the final three PFOS treatment facilities that'll be completed by the end of 2026. So, Rich, you know, to you and your staff, again, thank you for the yeoman's work in trying to improve the water quality when it comes to PFOS here, and get us to that final finish line by the end of 2026.
Thank you. We're very excited.
Yeah, this has been a long road, and it has been torturous for you, I know, but this is the beginning of the end, and as I've said many times, Ridgewood Water is providing a model for the nation on how to treat its PFOS.
This year, we'll be sharing a lot of the progress that's occurring. You cannot believe what's come out of the ground with these facilities, and you can now visualize what we've been planning for all these years.
Nice going. Thank you.
The end is in sight.
All right, the final item tonight is a follow-up from the February 3 budget presentation for the Water Department, putting forward the proposed rate increases that were discussed at that meeting. Since that meeting on February 3, the full budget and the proposed increases have been reviewed by the professional firm Raftellus. They're professionals in the field of order rate-setting and budgets. They have provided an eight-page review letter that will be shared on the Ridgewood Water website. They've drawn the conclusion that the 2025 budget is reasonable and appropriate, that the budget has been developed in a manner that aligns with industry standards, sound principles for rate-setting, and applicable state and local statutes. So it was good to have their full review. There was questions, commentary, both Mr. Kaz Mark and Mr. Rooney were on a call with us late last week reviewing it, and as I said, I'll be sharing the memorandum online along with a copy of the budget presentation. In terms of the rates themselves, we're proposing for this year a volume rate increase from $5.86 to $6.37 per thousand, plus the one-cent penny tax that the state imposes. This is a 9% increase in the volume rate. The facilities charge, which is a fixed charge based on the size of everyone's meter, was last increased in 2018. We're also proposing a 9% increase on that to cover the cost for the maintenance of treatment distribution and metering. For 5/8 meter, that will increase from $32.98 to $35.95 per quarter. And the, finally, the PFOS charge, the fixed charge that is also related to the meter size, 5/8 meter will increase from $24.71 to $37.07 per quarter, and each size of meter up to four-inch will also subsequently increase, which is spelled out in the ordinance. What this all results in is the average rate payer who uses a 5/8 meter using 7,000 gallons of water per month will see an increase of $81.24 per year or 11.7%. The equivalent cost per gallon of that water still remains less than a penny per gallon. The next steps are to post this information online, and if you decide to move forward, we're looking forward to introduction on March 10, and a final hearing on April 9.
So Rich, I have to say, I don't like this, but I thought your presentation, February 3, got me comfortable with it, and I want to thank you and your team for making that presentation as professional as it was.
Thank you.
And Rich, can you just revisit to what, to the councilman's point, when you and Mike were here and made your budget presentation before the Village Council, you did a comparison of the rates.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
As opposed to other water utilities in the area. Can you, can you just speak to that a little bit so the public has some context in case they didn't watch the budget meeting?
Yes, and that, and that will be shared. It's part of the Ralph Raftellus memo. Once again, Ridgewood Water remains in the middle of the pack to relative comparable utilities that Raftellus chose, and that's showing both what the average rate payer pays on annual basis now and what they're going to pay. We still remain in the middle of the pack.
And when you say the middle of the pack, you mean even with regard to the PFOS charges that are going to be affected by this rate change?
That's correct, and some of these utilities on this table have not even implemented PFOS treatment or charges at this point, so there you are going to escalate even further. And, you know, as the councilman said, nobody likes to see rate increases, but this is a $25 million budget, and for one... $25 million budget, and for one reason, because of PFOS investment that has to be made. Overall, operating expenses were only going up 2%. The remaining increase is the result of debt, and debt that's associated with the PFOS investment that's being made.
And through you, Mayor, just one other question. Rich, if you could also talk so that the public understands the other efforts we're making to try to defray the costs of the PFOS treatment?
Right, so we are still seeking every possible avenue for grants. We submitted through the mayor of Glenrock a request to Chairwoman Swain to help possibly fund the main treatment plant in Glenrock to get it in the state budget. We continue to seek financing for the I-Bank at very competitive rates. Lastly, saw that we're going to get 75% in 0% interest instead of 50%. They continue to give us principal forgiveness when it's available, up to $2 million a year. In addition to that, we're continuing with our, our legal suits against the firms that manufactured these companies. There should be some news coming forward on it this year. And I actually got a call, Mr. Rogers and I got contacted by our insurance attorneys that they are now looking further into the case of trying to recover insurance because we found in the attic with the help of the village clerk, insurance policies that predate environmental exclusions. So we're hopeful that we try to find any avenue of funds that we could apply to future budgets to help offset these increases.
Yeah, I totally encourage you to keep going down every road possible. Again, I don't like it. It's the right thing to do, though. I mean, at the heart was the EPA changed the requirements, which was the right thing to do. We need to get PFOS out of our water, but they didn't fund it. And it lets it up to local municipalities like us to figure out ways to do the right thing and to fund this. And again, to Paul's comments and everyone else, you were far ahead of the curve, meaning Ridgewood is far ahead of the curve in, in getting ahead of this. And again, want to thank you for the professional way in which you handled it, and even got me to agree to a rate rise, so, you know, kudos to you, but it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support.
I think it's excellent, and I, you know, we're going to get the benefit. As I've told you, my other water utility is not where we need to be, and they're still more expensive than Ridgewood. Talk to me about the timeline and when the public will see it. That memo will go up, and then this rate will follow its path here. It'll be in effect when, and then how are we going to talk to the public about that?
So the memo will go up this Friday. Generally, the rates apply to the third quarter bill for every rate payer.
Okay.
So they see the, the rates for half the, half, half their bills for the year, and then they carry over to the first part of the next year.
Okay. Good luck.
Anybody else on this?
No, great job, though.
Rich, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night, Rich.
Mayor, with, with your and the council's indulgence, we have some staff here, so do you mind if we address the issues that they would have to speak to? So Dawn and Carol, if you'll come up, and I would just call the council's attention to, under policy D2 on the agenda?
Good evening and welcome.
Hello, Dawn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we have long discussed making modifications to the wildlife feeding ordinance and how that also affects bird feeders. Dawn has brought some of her concerns and some of Tyco's concerns, our animal control contractor, to the ordinance working group. I know Deputy Mayor Perrin, last year, endeavored with the Health Department to do some public service announcements in this space. I think we've been effective in doing that. But tonight, Dawn is here to make some recommendations for changes to the actual ordinance itself. I know some of the council members have had some residents who were concerned about the feeding of deer, the feeding of other wildlife, how that attracts not only the wildlife, but also vermin in, in some cases. So Dawn, I'll, I'll turn it over to you to share with the council the changes that your department's recommending.
Great, thank you. Hi, everybody. So basically, the village has always had an ordinance in place to not feed wildlife on village property, village-owned property. And due to the fact that we're receiving complaints of deer and other wildlife being attracted to various properties, as well as rats throughout the years, we have discussed putting an ordinance in place restricting feeding of wildlife on personal property, where people are just scattering seed or throwing bread on the ground, which would attract other wildlife, bears, rodents, and other, especially right now with Canada geese, that's another concern because of H1N1, H5N1, sorry. Old, old. So we are proposing an ordinance to enforce not feeding on private property and having bird feeders under a specific requirement. So I'm going to read the ordinance to you. "The feeding of such wildlife is both detrimental to the animals and causes a public health nuisance and safety hazard detrimental to the health and general welfare of the public. Of special concern to public health is the increasing spread of bird flu, the H5N1 virus, and that deer and other rodents such as mice and rats carry ticks that carry Lyme disease, a physically and neurologically debilitating disease. No person shall purposely or knowingly feed unconfined wildlife, including but not limited to birds, deer, wildfowl, raccoons, or any other animal not kept as a domestic pet in the village of Ridgewood on lands either publicly or privately owned. It shall be presumed that a person is purposely or knowingly feeding wildlife unless the feed is placed in a bird feeder that is raised at least eight feet off the ground with a food slash seed catching device attached to collect food seed scattered by the animals or placed in a feeder whose opening is sufficiently restricted to prevent wildlife from accessing the feed. Feeding wildlife also increases the risk of exposure to rabies for human, humans and domestic pets by attracting potentially rabid wildlife. No more than three such feeders shall be permitted on any single property."
And I just want to point out, Councilman Mortimer and I had conversation this week, I think he spoke to Dawn, you as well, there, he did inquire with a local company that offers bird feeders. And is there, is there an adjustment in the height based on your research, Frank?
Yes, so I, I, it was good, I want to commend Dawn for putting this together because I think it's a great step, and it's very needed in our community, and the deputy mayor for also working on it. So what I did is that there's Wild Birds Unlimited, which is a big bird, a wild bird store in Paramus on Route 17. So I wanted to find out what are the average heights of the poles that they sell, because I think it's important that we manage this as needed, but we also don't want to penalize people that are just trying to attract birds in their backyard, which I found out is the second most popular hobby in the U.S. So they said that their basic, their traditional pole is eight feet, however, six inches goes into the ground. And then, so that would leave it at seven and a half feet. Then I also did research, and I have three different sources, two ironically from Michigan, one of their Department of Natural Resources, another from their Audubon Society, and both of them said that feeders should be six feet off the ground or higher. Other things is that we want to consider is that if it's above, if we make the requirement too high, then it's going to impact people that can't reach the feeder, and that, like ADA and just things like that. So we have to be mindful of all of that as well. So the, the suggestion would be that we tweak it so it's saying that no wildlife can access the feed below six feet. So that way, it's not necessarily saying what the pole has to be, but just that the feed has to be above six feet, which corresponds perfectly with what I read about how deer can eat how high. One other comment I wanted to make, too, is that in regards to the HPAI virus, that there's relatively, that per Cornell's Ornithology Department, there's very few documented cases of that in songbirds. And so that means that there's a very low risk of an outbreak among wild songbirds, and there's no official recommendation to take down feeders unless you also keep chickens. So I think that that's important, too. So yeah, so if we just change it so that it's, the feeders are above six feet, I think we're golden.
Well, I think it has to be the bottom of the feeder.
Correct, correct.
The baffle, the catch basin, whatever, it has to be at six feet. And I do want to thank Tyco for coming tonight. It was because of what you said at the Deer Forum a year ago, that we got to stop feeding the deer. We got to stop feeding all the wildlife, that I started working on this. I had a couple of suggestions on, in the first paragraph, the yellow portion where, let's see, what's the beginning of the sentence? "Of special concern to public health is the spread, is the increasing spread of bird flu, the H5N1 virus, and that deer and other rodents, blah, blah, blah." I would take out the word "other" because deer are not rodents.
Oh, right, right, right.
Okay? That's my first suggestion. And then, when you get to the paragraph that begins with "no person shall purposely or knowingly feed unconfined wildlife," that really is what the violation is. And that, I would say, doesn't belong in the purpose section. It belongs in the prohibited acts and conduct section, which is 105-52. Similarly, the next paragraph, "no more than three feeders on the property," that should be in the prohibited acts section. However, in the second yellow paragraph that says, "Feeding wildlife also increases the risk of exposure to rabies for humans and domestic pets by attracting potentially rabid wildlife," I think that goes back to purpose rather than in a prohibited act section. So I'm in favor of all of it.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. And I know I have heard a fair number of complaints as well by folks who live next to neighbors that like to feed animals, which sounds great at first until you realize that, you know, Ridgewood is a fairly well-developed town, and for those animals to then go into that feeder's backyard means they have to go through several other people's backyards, bringing ticks, leaving droppings. You know, for folks who have little kids, that's can be a little discerning. I like the fact this allows bird feeding. That's great. But we do the community great disservice when we try to feed wild animals in our backyard in a places as, as, as urban as Ridgewood is. I completely support this. I'd like to vote on this as soon as possible. I agree 100% with Pam's, with Pam's suggestions on the statute, and I think this is just an easy one to vote and move on.
So through you, Mayor, Dawn, these are relatively simple changes between yourself and Matt.
Yes.
Can you get copy to, to Heather so that this can be introduced at the next public meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
One other interesting thing, this is more for the public, if they have, if, if they want to feed the birds and they're having problems with mammals coming, you can get hot pepper seed. And that's, and what's interesting about that is that mammal, or excuse me, birds don't have Casian receptors, so the hot pepper is, doesn't impact them. And that's why they're developed that way. That's why peppers, because they want birds to eat them and fly away and dispose of them as opposed to mammals eating them there and creating competition for the plant.
Could you just use hot sauce instead?
Yeah, right.
How did you know that?
That I actually, my conversation with Wild Birds Unlimited.
I was going to say, he's branching out from bees.
I'm telling you.
I love that Frank went out and did like boots-on-the-ground research, and I'm incredibly grateful for it. I mean, obviously, this is a good thing, and, you know, the wildlife is somewhat out of control in Ridgewood, so I just wanted to say thank you for all that you guys do. It seems like an incidental discussion, but it really has a real impact. So thank you, and thank you, Frank. I love that you went for broke and found all this out and made it so much better. I love it.
Who thought you'd get such strong support from the council?
I was so, I was so impressed when he called me. I was like, wow. I was like, that was really nice. That was so supportive.
All good. Thank you all so much for the good work that you've done.
Thank you both. All right.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
Have a great evening.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Rudishouser up, and I'll call the council's attention to 8C8 and 8E1. They connect to each other, so it'll all be part of the same discussion.
8C8.
So as Chris takes his seat, as the council's well aware of, we are in the process of removing abandoned underground fuel storage tanks at the North Walnut Street parking lot. That is municipal property. When we put the bid spec together, we had a certain amount of soil that was slated to be removed from there. As the project wore on, we encountered additional soil that's going to be, that's going to need to be removed from the site. So Chris is here to talk you through that tonight with regard to this proposed change order. And then the second piece of this, which is E1, is for him to authorize execution and sign those documents for the DEP. So Chris, floor is yours.
Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. 120 Franklin, that's our site. We're in the process of cleaning up. Oh, excuse me, 132 is right next to 120 Franklin, which is the town garage, which is also undergoing a cleanup. We had hoped we wouldn't have so much contamination, but that didn't, didn't come to pass. We've removed, I think, about eight underground storage tanks from the site. Those were from the former Texaco station. Those tanks were abandoned in place in the late 1970s, consistent with the manner of doing so at that time, which was basically pump out the tank, fill it up with sand and water, leave it in place. Unfortunately, the work at that time didn't address any of the contamination.
So Chris, at this point, we had allocated in the bid for 400 tons of material to be removed, and now we're up to 3,000 tons, correct?
Yeah, the bid had 400 tons. That was maybe optimistic, but now we're with our LSRP, our Licensed Site Remediation Professional, VHB, we're estimating we're well over that at about 3,000 additional tons.
Wow.
Is that the big pile we see?
Pardon?
Is that the big pile we see on the site?
No, that's the little pile you see on the site. We have no room to dig all that material out until we get rid of the little pile, dig out, store, haul off. We cannot dig out the full quantity and store it on site.
So that's only a portion of it. There's, there's more to come out of the ground.
Are all the tanks out?
I believe, yes, all the tanks are out.
Okay.
And the other thing I will tell you is that this is a sizable change order, so we did review this with Nissavaccia, our municipal auditor, just to make sure that we were well within the local public contracts law, and they have opined in writing attached to the memo tonight that this change order would be permissible based on the fact that they are still charging us for the same amount of tonnage. Well, they're charging us the same amount per ton. It's just more quantity than we had initially intended for.
So Keith, so how did this work? Where is this money coming from?
We have, we have money in the bond to cover, to cover the change order, yes.
Gotcha.
Chris, is there a chance there's even more contamination when you get to 3,000?
Of course. We're excavating pretty much to the limits of the property line. We have a best guess estimate from our consultant, and hopefully we'll, we'll be at that amount.
Is that the 3,000, or is it like what?
The 3,000 additional.
And, and the good thing about the LSRP, which, you know, having an LSRP is an important piece of this puzzle, that this particular LSRP is contracted to oversee this project for us, and they are also contracted by the village to work with the 120 Franklin, the town garage property, their LSRP, just to, so that we have a system of checks and balances between what their professionals doing on a piece of property that we now own, to make sure that they're accountable for the decisions that are being made on that property. So there's, they're actually talking about both sites. We did a Zoom call, I guess, last week, mid-last week.
Yes, I believe so.
On this, because obviously, you know, the, the interplay between the two is something that our licensed site remediation professionals need to, to work through.
And are you finding any other type of contamination?
Excuse me?
Are you finding, can you hear me now? Are you finding any other type of contamination, like dry cleaning runoff, or is it all just related to the tanks?
There is dry cleaning solvents in the groundwater plume. That plume originates on Chestnut Street. That plume has been identified about 10, 15 years ago. That washes through both the 120 site and our site at 132 Franklin. We have not found anything more out of the ordinary than hydrocarbon contaminates related to diesel fuel, waste oil, and gasoline. The gasoline, so far, has looked very good, because we haven't found very strong indications that it was leaded gas. That should be kept in mind, because unleaded gas, I believe, was brought to the market around '74, so.
Thanks.
And keep in mind, too, talking to the LSRP, you know, while we have the ground open, we want to get as much material out of the ground, because that's going to assist with the long-term natural remediation of the property. Other questions?
A weird question that, since Green Ridgewood made me think about, if we're going to excavate, take out 3,000 tons of space, is there something like for retain, that we could put in to make it better for stormwater runoff, or when we fill it? or when we fill it?
Groundwater is about 10, 12 feet below grade. There is a lot of water. We have a map in our files from about 1850 that shows a river running through that general area.
Wow.
We have, like I said, we have seen the plume from Chestnut Street and how far it's advanced, both through our properties and further to the east. Could we make a subsurface detention system? Potentially. But I would caution, because we'd have to get that approved by the LSRP and most likely DEP, because they would be concerned that it would cause maybe a washing into the groundwater of any residual material.
Yeah. I just wondered like why it's open. And I don't want to, you know, propose anything that would impact future, whatever we end up doing on that property. But if we could proactively think, is there something that we could do to resolve some of the Green Ridgewood issues that maybe we can help two birds with one?
We could certainly, we could certainly take that back to Laura, our LSRP, and see what the thought process is as they, you know, continue to oversee this. But any objection to the change order or the execution of documents?
No.
It's great.
And Joan Hubertus from Green Ridgewood came to speak to me and Keith about putting in a type of grass that requires less mowing, called premium. Oh, okay, sorry. Joan Hubertus of Green Ridgewood suggested that we try planting Pearls Premium Grass, which has much longer roots. And it'd be worth, you know, the experiment because we got to plant grass there anyway, at least on a temporary basis.
Right, right.
And maybe do a rain garden.
Well, for this site, the 132 Franklin, I believe the intention, unless the council changes their mind, is to restore it as a surface parking lot, like it had been.
She's only, she's only talking about 120.
120, okay, yeah.
Yeah, 120, the intent is to take out the hard surface.
120 will have a breathable, right? We're pretty much set on seeds. And I do agree with Pam. I think Frank, maybe before your council, we were all at the Pearl presentation. It's interesting. It's an interesting product that, it's a nice little patch to test it because it's a cool product and it's a great recommendation from, have you ever heard of it before?
Not of a particular seed. I am familiar with using grass swales in stormwater management. They produce a very good stripping effect to surface water runoff, stripping the hydrocarbons out of it. This sounds like more, it's like a grass that tolerates a contaminant level that others may not.
It just has longer roots.
And it runs deeper, long roots.
It sounds like a tougher grass, like, you know, it's hardier.
Needs less water.
That's a hard grass.
Once it's established.
We, that's certainly something to consider. We have to see, working with the LSRP's, what the final surface is going to be for 120, whether there'll be a deed restriction for any residual amounts that could not be removed, and also whether a deed restriction will require an institutional barrier between any residual amounts of contamination and the surface materials.
Well, won't that, if we have to cap it that way, won't that affect the property next to it as well?
Well, again, we have to look at it. We have to look all around the 120 site in relationship, especially with 132. 120 is a little higher elevation than the 132 site. So we have to see what the final recommendations are. And then, of course, you folks in the council will weigh in what you want.
So from a procedural standpoint, once the prior property owner has met their obligation to physically clean up the property, the only thing that they're still on the hook to do is the two years' worth of environmental testing, which they're, they have an obligation to. But at that point, these two properties are both ours. Once, I mean, it's ours now by title. But at the end of the day, they'll be done with their physical work effort. And then, as we get reports back from the LSRP, then, you know, probably early fall, we'll be able to have an informed conversation about what can and can't go there with Laura and her, and her team.
And as an example, when we built the parking garage on the Hudson Street lot, we excavated contaminated material, but there was a very low-level residual amount that had to stay. That has now been deed restricted, and it's capped from the public, exposure to the public by a 12-inch-thick or 10-inch-thick concrete slab. That deed notice, we are just wrapping up with the environmental on that job, filing the deed notices with the county and with the DEP.
Anything else on this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before Mr. Rudis-Hauser leaves, if you recall, at our last work session, we had a discussion about the annual permit for the sidewalks. Unfortunately, inadvertently, it was not put on tonight's agenda. However, because we operate under Robert's Rules of Order, if the council consents to have that discussed this evening, we can discuss it as an agenda item. As I said, we did say that we were going to discuss it tonight. I know Mr. Rudis-Hauser is ready to answer your questions. So we need the consensus of the council to be able to move forward with that this evening, if you wish to do so.
Anybody have any objection to that?
Once again, Heather's right. We say that all day.
Matt, your legal opinion was, you know, kind of, there was a low bar on that. Yeah, so we, no one has any objection to that. But before we leave the last item on 8, or D, no, excuse me, 8E1, the authorization portion of this to execute documents, my only question is, should we not also have an alternate in addition to yourself so that, in the event that you're not around or you take a day off or you're out sick, someone is there to execute that? And who would you recommend?
We could do that. I would probably want to punt it up to Keith. But his schedule is probably quite busy as it is.
Heather, if the council's inclined to do so, you can add me to the resolution. I'm not going to sign it unless he looks it over and approves it. So, you know, and I think that works both ways. So I think, I think that would be fine if that's what the council's inclined to do.
We just did this on the cleanup of the contaminated material at 220 Chestnut Street. The council passed an authorization for me to sign the load manifest, and I coordinated with the contractor over a period of weeks to get that material hauled out.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has objection to this. I'm just thinking logistically to make sure someone's.
You have a very good point, Mayor.
Good, so let's move on to.
Wait, wait, wait. If, if time is of the essence on getting this signature authorized, do we want to have a special public meeting on March 5? Or can you wait till March 12?
I've already had to sign, I've already had to sign the two documents to submit to the receiving facility that's going to take the material to start the process because they have to review those documents. They have to review the lavatory analytics of what the material contains. I'm hoping to start the haul out as soon as possible. I'm comfortable signing the manifests and waiting for the official permission slip from you folks when it comes through.
Which would be, which would be the 12th. I think you can wait till then, right?
I was hoping we could start the haul out maybe next week because the 400 tons that we already have allocated in the bid, we have to get rid of that, then they have to excavate some more.
In an effort to expedite this, because I do think there's a benefit to getting it done while the weather is a little chillier, is there any objection to Chris moving forward with this, knowing that we're going to confirm that by resolution this on March the 12th?
I think we're all good.
Yeah.
Go for it.
All right, so I'll let the contractor know of the council's thoughts and try to get this moving along as quickly as they can get it moving along also.
Good, and now let's move on.
Well, let's pivot to the discussion if the council's inclined to do so with regard to the annual sidewalk permit. So Chris, you want to share some insight? I know we.
Yes.
Talked about it at the last meeting.
Heather advised me that you folks had a number of questions when this topic came up at the last workshop. Yenni Anderson, in our office, reviewed the meeting tape, wrote down the questions that you folks had posed. Both she and I made comments in response to those questions, and I believe you had forwarded them over to the council members.
I shared them with the council, yep.
Why we're doing this, or why we're requesting to do this, and the purpose for it. The key thing we're looking at, from our perspective in engineering, is a better control on how many sidewalks are opened up. We've unfortunately had too many years of experience with one contractor in particular who likes to open up as many sidewalks as they can because they have an annual permit. And then, we have to deal with the consequences when the residents call up to complain that they can't walk, they have to walk in the street, or they have to push their child's carriage in the street. And it takes weeks and weeks to get caught up with those open sidewalks. The reason for that, to catch up, is Parks Department does the root grinding. Peter in our office does the inspections to make sure the sidewalks are done properly. He works with the contractor and the homeowner. If a roundout is recommended by the village arborist to save the tree, all those things take time. There has been a question, I think, that was posed from you folks. We do have in the ordinance the ability that the contractor can hire their own certified tree expert or licensed arborist. In our experience, none have done so. I think the reason is, there's a cost factor. The services of our arborist, when he's available, are not charged to the residents or to the contractor. However, if they have to go outside to get somebody private, they're going to have to pay. That also helps delay the issue. I understand that there were some suggestions that we use the summons process to get the contractor to cooperate better with us. I fear that that, if we're too heavy-handed with the summons process, that those costs will just be passed on to our residents desiring to get the work done. I also do not know, from the municipal finance perspective, if fines collected by violations go back to which budget line item. The only advantage of a fine in this circumstance is it is a municipal violation, so we do not have to give a significant cut to Trenton as we would have to if it was a traffic ticket. If there's any questions I can answer on your behalf, I'd give my best shot.
I want to say thanks to you and Yenni for the detail that you provided. I did read through all those. But I'm still, I'm still thinking, is this the best way to move forward? And my reason for that is, why do most people replace their sidewalk? Don't they receive a summons? It's, it's.
We try not to give a summons. We try the nice and gentle approach. We send them a letter requesting them to fix the sidewalk.
Right. So it's not like somebody wakes up one day and says, today's the day that I'm going to fix my sidewalks. It's generated by the village. And so, when I read through the logic, it's essentially, hey, we have a lot of sidewalks that need to be repaired because of the streets, and because of the limited number of people that we have working, which is like any place, both in Parks and Rec and in your department, we're not able to do our part of getting the sidewalk fixed so it gets backed up. It also struck me as how there's, per Yenni, that there's the one main sidewalk vendor who has undercut everybody else.
Correct.
And so, that plus the annual means that they're bringing a big cost savings to our residents. So my concern with saying, let's eliminate the annual, is that the repercussions of that. Like, I see that that's going to increase the cost to the resident because they're going to pass along probably that $50 fee. Plus, I would predict other stuff as well. Because if there's one company that's been able to figure out this business, then I think that the issue is elsewhere. So I, as opposed to passing this, I'd like to get more information of how we can maybe streamline the process. So it's, because I agree with you, too. It was my street last summer, everybody had their sidewalks torn up. So I just, I acknowledge the problem. I appreciate the detail, but I think that we need another way to fix this.
Yeah, a lot of our notifications to residents, we sent out a letter giving them, say, 60 days to repair a sidewalk. The impetus for that letter is often a complaint that someone has given us that they've tripped on a sidewalk. Or we get a police report where someone has been injured at a sidewalk. We go out and investigate, and we do find a defect. If we find a defect, then, of course, we immediately notify the responsible property owner. If there's a litigation further down the road, the village attorney, Rogers, will keep me very busy on that also.
But if we give them 60 days to do it, and then we're, and we're trying to slow down how quickly they can be repaired, then we're exposing people to move that to the next step. So it's like, you know, it just, it seems like there's a lot of pieces here, and I don't know if this is the piece in the chain of events that needs to be addressed.
We give 60 days because we try to be fair with people. Then afterwards, if they don't repair it, we send a second letter, again, with a time limit. If then, nothing is occurred by the property owner, only then will we send the summons. I have maybe three or four outstanding summonses before the court. People have come to meet with the prosecutor. They've requested a time extension, again. We'll see when we have the next hearing if they've complied.
Chris, I don't have the memo in front of me because we're not, you know, we didn't have it scheduled for tonight. But remind me what the increase in the fee was because I thought it was, it's still an annual fee, but it's just an increased fee of like $100 or something.
Actually, no, I have to correct you, Mayor. We're proposing to eliminate the annual permit and have everybody just pay the same $50 per sidewalk location permit.
Okay, but, and just for, then, just for perspective, usually, if someone has a 30-foot frontage, I know I've replaced sidewalks in the past, that is many thousands of dollars. So just on that singular point, Frank, the, I don't think that the $50 fee is so significant relative to the size of the project that it's going to have any, any impact on the cost of the project. It's a negligible fee. You know, if it's, if it's a $5,000 project, then it's $50.
I mean, it's also the fact they're going to have to go every single time to get a new permit. I mean, that, I think, is really where the money's going to be because, and I don't know, I had the same thing happen to me when I first moved to Ridgewood, it wasn't 5,000. Because even if you got a big frontage, it's only a couple of slabs that have to be lifted up for the roots. But then you got to pay some guy, you know, who works for the landscaper to come here, fill the paperwork out, wait in line, come back out. I think Frank raises a good point that, I understand, you know, that we have a lot of leeway in the summonses, but the homeowners don't know that. They get something from the village saying, you got to fix it in 60 days. They can't find somebody to come fix it within 60 days. They're going to get nervous, create stress. I agree with Frank. I get what you're getting at, and we, you know, it's a problem in terms of having all these sidewalks lifted up. But there's got to be a better way to do this rather than like making the landscapers have to come apply for a license every single time they want to do a single job. I agree also with Frank that by having, you know, a couple companies have these contracts, or, I'm sorry, or the, you know, the annual, the annual permit, it brings prices down, it makes them more available to do the work. I have to think there's a better way for us to enforce or require them to come tell us, which I know they're required to do now. There's got to be a better enforcement mechanism than getting rid of the entire annual, annual permit.
So I agree. I have a question about that, that might be. So it's sort of, you said there's three vendors and there's one lead offender?
There were three companies that had annual permits, and in the last year or two, it's gotten down to just one.
So not, look, I don't want to get into the whole debating of everything because it's like one way, this way, one. Do you think we could just meet with that vendor and talk to them? And say, look, this is, because it's the same problem, it's like round and round the problem goes, right? You know, if, if you don't do the annual, then you have the cumbersome transaction. And if you do do it, you know, you're, the homeowner is adding the step of coming down, you know, driving, making the list, making it happen. Could we meet with the vendor?
We have met with the vendor, we have communicated with the vendor many, many times. Not much of results.
Can you not issue a permit, this illegal question, based upon non-performance?
Well, if he has an annual permit, he's got the permit.
But based upon last year? I mean, like, if it seems like we have, to me, outside of the ordinances and all the layers, it seems like we have a situation or an opportunity with one person. And I'm assuming they like generate these lists through public information, right? That's how they know.
Oh, yeah, they, as Yanni has found out, this one company has even gone to the extent of getting a solicitor's permit. So, they line up the work on a single street. They open a request, copies of the letters we send out to residents, so they know exactly which doors to knock on. You know, they figured it out.
Yeah, they've got it. So, do we, do we want to deal with offline with the one vendor and take a stab at that?
And part of it too, though, is like, so my, with that, two different things is, one, they have a system. And by that system, they've knocked out competitors, because their prices are the lowest. So, my concern is that if we change their way of doing business too much, they won't be able to provide that service at that same level of quantity. And we might have other vendors come in, then that's still going to raise prices.
But, but it's a lesser service, because they leave the sidewalk.
Well, and that's, because like Yanni had said, that's so that they can then get them under contract. But the main issue here, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, what Yanni said is that we just don't have the manpower to grind the roots or to inspect it.
We cannot, we, we, the engineering and the Parks Department can just not keep up with dozens of open sidewalks that are, particularly those, you know, they generate complaints from our residents about unsafe walking conditions. We try very nicely to work with the parks, but they also have other obligations.
Right, and I'm, and I want to validate that there's a lot of work that is being done by yours and their departments, so this is not any other suggestion otherwise. However, I think that, should we look in, like, it's kind of like, it goes like this. The town sends a letter and says, fix your sidewalk. And then, we get so busy that we're not able to do it in a timely manner, so these sidewalks lay open for a long period of time. So, it's kind of like, I think that there's more broken than just.
So, is the general consensus?
Wait, can I say something? Your list of three people, which you gave to me, three companies, two of them have given me quotes. And, and by the way, the village never wrote to me. But how about telling the, these vendors that if you fail to notify us timely, we will suspend our services of grinding the roots?
It's much easier to use the language in the ordinance and just issue a violation. Again, as I said before, none of these contractors are using private certified tree experts to do the tree work. They're all relying, or the main one is certainly, always relying on the Parks Department and our staff to do it. That's where things get gummed up and backlog. They can, if they wanted to get the work done quickly, they could certainly use a private tree service, look at the tree, give a report, make the proper recommendations. The ordinance permits that, but nobody's availing themselves of that component of the ordinance.
So, Keith, I think it's pretty clear we're not going to consensus to pass this. I think it's also pretty clear that, I think we're going to probably look to you to maybe come up with some other solutions or other ways to address Chris's legit problem and our legit concerns. Can I suggest maybe tabling this and maybe asking you to come back with a couple of ideas of ways that we can meet some?
I honestly think, Councilman, that if the policy's going to remain, which sounds like that's the general consensus, that's what I was going to say earlier, this is more of an implementation at the staff level. So, we, Chris and I'll meet, we'll meet with the folks down in engineering, and we'll come up with some efficiencies here that we can implement at that level. And then we'll report back to you as to how that works. Especially because we're getting into, we're, you know, within a month of the calendar, we'll, we'll start to get into, you know, sidewalk season, home repair season, all that type of thing. And we'll, we'll try to have those efficiencies in place as that work effort begins.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so, let's dial back to C1. This is an award of contract for thermal imaging cameras. You may remember that the fire department was fortunate enough to receive a $29,905 grant through the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. This is the award of the equipment that was granted through that grant, and it's to Strategic Safety Dynamics of Smithtown, New York, not to exceed the grant amount, 29,905.
Questions?
Nope.
Let's go.
The next is an award of contract under the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, Cooperative Pricing System for the purchase of equipment, service, and licenses for access, control, and CCTV. This is a recommendation from Lieutenant Chuck down in the Police Department. He's been searching for a new vendor for the AFORSED services and equipment. They'll be able to provide technical support, either with software updates, hardware repairs, and licensing renewals. Open Systems Integrators OSI out of Hamilton, New Jersey, the amount of 194, 194,000, and this is available through capital accounts as well as the 2025 operating budget. Any questions on that?
Yeah, why is it both capital and operating accounts that are funding it?
Because some of it is going to be the purchase of equipment, which will have a useful life in exceedance of five years, which allows it to be purchased through capital, and some of it will be service-oriented. So, that is not able to be paid out of capital, has to be paid out of operating.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Okay.
Very good.
Just a real quick question, that, and I'm not asking for all 300 points of contact on here, but where are all these cameras that they're referring to?
Throughout all the municipal facilities.
Go, go do a tour of the police station, you'll see it, it's actually very cool.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you'd like, if you'd like us to set that up, we can.
Yes, I would.
Okay, great. Item three is an award of contract, again, under the Educational Services Commission, New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System for a new equipment body for the Ford F-1, uh, 250 pickup truck in the Signal Division. This is to purchase a new truck body for that vehicle. They were able to do some research, Rich Charlton and his staff, and we can get that through Cliffside Body Corp. Under the AFORSED Co-op, not to exceed 24,531.
So, I love the fact that it's cheaper than a new truck, but I know we're putting on a 2020 truck. Is it worth, do we think we're going to have that much more life out of the?
I asked that question, and they, they think it is, they think it's more economical than going out and buying another.
Diesel truck, I assume?
Another 250. I don't know that, I can confirm that tomorrow.
All right, I'm going to assume it is, which is probably why they think it's going to last so long, because it's an F-250, but I'm satisfied.
Good.
All right. Item four, award of contract under Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing for the repair and resurfacing of the Somerville tennis courts. This is a recommendation from Nancy Beagos, our Recreation Director. These tennis courts service not only Ridgewood residents, but also our varsity and junior varsity and freshman tennis teams at Ridgewood High School. The resurfacing of the entire playing area with new nets amounts to $79,000. These are available through the listed old capital accounts. And again, this will be awarded through the Sourcewell Cooperative to Sport Tech Acrylics of Brewster, New York.
Questions?
Nope.
Good.
Okay. Along those same lines, similar recommendation for the Glen Pickleball Court. This is a court that, in Parks and Recreation's estimation, has deteriorated over the last few years. The courts were converted to, from tennis to pickleball back in 2019, so it's been a while. And this too would go through Sourcewell to Sports Tech in the amount of $39,000. That includes individual crack repair and the complete resurfacing of all four pickleball courts. Again, this is through the capital budget that's mentioned, and this is previous capital.
Good.
Yeah, I just want to say that, having been at the pickleball court, that gets an amazing amount of use. So, I'm not surprised that it needs to be redone, and I, because our older population likes to do it, that I think we should, you know, this is great to do, and I just want to be mindful of when they use it, so we can optimize when we do resurface it.
Sure. And I just want to say, on the, on the tennis court piece, you know, this is consistent with the agreement we have with the Board of Education, where we share the costs as tennis courts throughout the village and on school property to be resurfaced.
We like do one-off. So, we take a turn, they take a turn, that's what happened at the high school.
You mean, year to year?
Uh, like repair to repair, because it's not every year.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, number six, as we discussed during budget, we are converting the rental of two Freightliner M2 rearload Packer trucks that have been rented for use by the sanitation department, returning that into a purchase. So, with the capital budget, hopefully, being finalized at tomorrow evening's budget meeting, this would align with the introduction of the, the capital budget. And we would be able to award this contract to purchase those two vehicles for a not-to-exceed amount of $523,600.
Good.
Good.
Let's go.
Beyond good, this is so positive, come on guys.
Absolutely.
Next, number seven, is an award of professional services contract. This is to Beth McManus, who is handling our fourth round Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan. The scope of work is a lump sum of $22,500. The breakdown of that 22.5 is the Housing Plan Element, which is 6,500, and the Fair Share Plan, which is 16,000. The only costs on top of this would be her presence at any future meetings where she needs to report out on the progress of this.
Everybody good?
Yeah, very reasonable.
Okay, skipping down to number nine, authorized property tax refund for a disabled veteran, as is mentioned in the memorandum.
All good.
Okay, next is D1, under policy, and I am going to punt to Heather on this, as this impacts her department.
Okay, so the League of Municipalities has asked us to consider supporting a resolution which would allow local governments to publish legal notices on a legal government's official website instead of in the newspaper. As you probably know, some of the mid-Jersey newspapers are no longer in print, they are only digital. So, the legislature did enact a law which allows those municipalities to have to publish their legal ads to do so on the digital format of those newspapers. And it went until March 1st, they are now considering bills to push it all the way to December 31st, which probably will go through, because, you know, it's a requirement under the law to do these publications. However, certainly, no longer having to send them to the newspaper, have us then proofread what we've sent them in a word format, and somehow, they miss words and they, sometimes it goes back and forth three or four times with the newspaper to get it accurate. In addition, you know, we do have a website, we could put it on the website, and it would be at no cost. So, you know, it's my recommendation that it would be beneficial to do that. Certainly, a little less time-consuming for us in the, in the review and the editing and looking to see what, you know, dropped off when they uploaded it to their format. And I think it would also save tax dollars.
Yeah, 100% agree. I, I mean, I do like the idea of doing it on our own internal website. I think it's just a subsidy right now for some of our newspapers, which probably need it, but I'm not sure this is the right use for it. So, I'm 100% behind it, but I would, I would urge us to put it on a municipal website, rather than paying to put it on the digital newspapers.
I can see that it's a hassle to deal with the newspapers and get the notices and correct their mistakes and things like that. However, in getting the word out, local newspapers are our partners. And, in fact, the media is, is so important to a vibrant democracy that even at the, with the prospect of paying less money to the newspapers, I'm not prepared to undercut them at this point in time. They rely on our, our revenue, and I would not vote in favor of this.
So, as an old publishing guy, and who's spent over two decades and watched print textbooks disappear, I actually am in favor of this, because if, if college textbooks have moved online, and it saddens me to say this, but I think that if, and if it works in education, it can work here as well. And like what Heather's saying about mistakes and stuff being introduced, like, one of my favorite quotes from publishing is that there's still errors in the King James Bible. So, and so, it's not surprising to hear what you say. And so, to me, it's more of, and again, it pains me to say all this, but I just, I think most people would look online for things like this and not necessarily in print. So, as much as I would love for it to still be a vibrant space, I just don't see it. So, that's why I would, I would say yes.
I will point out to the council too, and I haven't gotten too deep into this issue, but having served years ago as the president of the Clerks Association in the state, you know, one of the difficulties with this is that people now go to the municipal website to get the answers to their municipal questions, right? A resident walked in here tonight and asked Heather if the budget meeting was on for tomorrow night, because they didn't see it on the website, right? Apparently, it was there, but they didn't see it. So, where did that person go to, to find that information? They went to the Ridgewood website. They didn't go to the Record website, they didn't go to the Star Ledger website, they went to the village website. The other trouble is, and I've heard this from residents before, more on planning and zoning board issues than on village council issues, is that because you're required to have a subscription to some of these media outlets, that's a barrier.
Yeah.
And with, with, with the, with the print version of the newspaper, Star Ledger's not printing at all anymore, right? The Bergen Records circulation is minimal at best. So, you don't have the ability, as well as you used to, to go and get a printed newspaper throughout the state. Might be a little easier here in Burton County, because the Record is still printing, they still print the spinoff, the Herald News. But eventually, just like the way of the Star Ledger, that, that's going to happen there too. So, I, again, however, however the council feels about this, but I will tell you that in my experience of late, and I think Heather would agree with this, people are driven to our website to seek the information that they're looking for, whether it be about a meeting, whether it be about the budget, whether it be about a land use notice, whatever it happens to be.
And the last thing I would add too, is that from, for accessibility, is going to be better online as well, because there's the built-in readers and all that. So, I actually think that it can reach more people that may not be able to continue to read the super-small print as it appears in, in print.
So, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, Heather, I love that you're promoting the website. Heather was on the original website purchase team, because the clerk's office probably produces more information than anybody. And, you know, as a former Ridgewood news delivery girl, it's really dwindled, true story. Twice a week, we used to do it on Thursdays and Sunday. And I agree, there's an economic barrier. I still am a subscriber, and if anybody's worried about the very valid issue Pam was talking about, the best way to fight back on that is subscribe to a newspaper. So, if people are listening to that and concerned, and you should be, go get a subscription, we are still subscribing. But I, people in real time do not do it that way anymore, they just don't do it. And I think this is going to make us, it's, it's better for the public, it's more accessible information, it's better for us, because our messaging is amplified. It's also better, because once it's digitized, a vast majority of our traffic comes from social and vice versa. So, we will be allowed to, Heather's going to be on social media. And she's, so I think, of course, I have the nostalgia, and it's sad, and I still read on paper. But this is where it's headed, and we also have to be faced with the reality that one day, it may be decided for the paper, and we need to be better prepared than we are now.
But I think just one more point, off of Keith's point, is that if you do want to get a subscription, you got to pay for a month and a minimum, right? And I, too, and I, actually, you're spot on, Shravan, I think if you want to, if you really want to support these newspapers, it's do what most of us have, which is pay for the subscription, which I, I do as well, because I think local news is fantastic. But again, I don't think this is the way to really support local news, and I think it should be much more fair, equitable, and accessible to do it the way that we're all discussing.
I, I have to say, when I, when I heard what Evan said, I thought, yeah, I'm going that way. And then I heard what Pam said, and I have to tell you, you know, the, the amount of money that we're going to save, it's not insignificant, but the cost of, to democracy of hastening the demise of newspapers, and I, we all know it's going that way. But I'm not going to make it go any faster. And I certainly believe that we should put it on our website and on social media at no cost. But, you know, this is the kind of thing that will, if, if every municipality does this, because I know that this is something that newspapers have talked about for several years now, that will be the end in and of itself of the physical newspaper, and in many instances, of the publication itself. So, I'm not going to support it this time.
So, it seems like we have three in favor and two against, so we will put it on the agenda, because, and then we'll vote on it on the 12th.
Wait, Heather, you don't want to vote on it on the 12th, I'm not here on the 12th.
Oh, okay.
And so, since I'm, and so, well, wait, hold on. If, it doesn't have to be a majority of five, it's a majority present, because you're absent.
I'm not going to be there.
So, then you.
Both of you are.
The vote will be the same, the outcome will be the same.
Still be a majority.
The vote will be down one each side.
I got to make sure I hear the 12th. Because there may be no meaning, I think I am, but this is all news to me.
Log rolling, we'll both, we'll both miss the meeting.
I'll call you from the beach.
I should be here the 12th, so assuming you guys are as well, we have quorum, so.
Okay.
All right.
We'll still put it on the 12th, then, guess?
Good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then, the last item I have for tonight is E2, and this is the Declaration of Police Vehicles as Surplus Property. There are three vehicles that are outlined in the memorandum from Lieutenant Chuck, cars 15, 20, and 29. He explains the condition and situation with each. And they'll be, they'll go back to Enterprise, and our replacement cars will be part of the operating budget.
I had one crazy thought on the cars, so, and I apologize, that, so let's go back to print for a second because it ties into this. So many people used to sell their college textbooks back at the end of the semester. And so what I, what I witnessed, and again, this is a thousand years ago, is that some college bookstores would have an old junker car, and however many dollars that you sold back in old books, you got a sledgehammer and got to whack the car out. So I wonder...
Line, lineup of people to hammer the police car?
Yeah, like, but for, to raise money. And I, and I don't, like, I haven't fully thought it out, but imagine if we, how many people might line up because it's a police car or just a smashed...
When you have your tour of the police station, you should recommend that one to chief.
What I was going to suggest was last year I volunteered for the dunk tank, where you had to buy tickets to sink council members into the dunk tank. And I was the only one that showed up from the council, so if you're really about charity, Frank, I'll see you, bring your bathing suit, all right?
I, I looked at the line in here that says, "It is our intention to replace these vehicles in 2025 with Ford Explorer PPVs." That means Police Pursuit Version. I did speak with Sergeant Chuck, Lieutenant Chuck about this, and he assured me that they are looking at fuel-efficient models. I forget whether he said hybrid or EV, but he's definitely looking at them. So I was glad to hear that.
Anybody else?
That's all I have, is my portion of the agenda, Mayor.
All good, let's go back to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Boyd, A. Loving, Ridgewood. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for moving forward, the manager for moving forward with addressing the issue regarding the sound in the room. I'm very much looking forward to hearing what the two firms have said in terms of improvements, and whatever firm is chosen, I hope that the council fully funds any recommendations they have. The sound is still terrible, at least when we're sitting in the back of the room. There was a lot of talk tonight about 132 Franklin Avenue, and in terms of the tonnage of material that's being removed, and a bond, I guess, is, is in place to fund it. I'm not clear, and I, after my comments, I mean, I hope that somebody answers the question, who in the end is paying for this? Are the taxpayers going to pay for the cleanup of that site? Or are we going after the insurance companies that insured the Texaco company that was operating in the facility? I'm hoping that we're going after the people who contaminated the site, and that it's not the taxpayers that are paying to remove that equipment or remove that material. There were also a number of comments made by a number of different members of the council regarding the pavilion at Habernacle. You may or may not know that there is a significant amount of concern from some members of the public as to the use of that facility. In particular, whether the facility is going to be allowed to reserve way in advance by the commercial operator that's at the site. So I'm hoping that there is going to be some policy put in place to assure the public that they will have equal access to that facility on a reservation basis, the same access or perhaps better access than the tenant who's at the site. A lot of people are concerned that the tenant is going to book that out for months in advance, and the public are not going to be able to get in to use it. So I'm hoping that there, again, that there is some policy put in place, and that policy is discussed in open public session to assure the public that they will have access to the site, just as the vendor who is up there is going to have access to the site. There was also a comment made this evening on a call-in about forcing people to go to city water. In the state of New Jersey, you cannot do that unless there is an ordinance in place. The Health Department cannot mandate somebody to switch to city water. The Health Department can shut down a private well until it's not contaminated any longer, but the Health Department cannot force somebody to hook up the city water. So unless this council has a plan to enact an ordinance in the Village of Ridgewood that says that you must hook up the city water, that can't take place. So just keep that in mind in terms of what you plan to do in terms of getting people onto the village water system over there. Oh, and there was a comment made by Councilwoman Perrin, or Deputy Mayor Perrin, regarding shredding. Before you put that on the website, or there are varying degrees of difference on that. A lot of people said shredded paper wrecks the machines that do the recycling, it causes fires. So before you go forward in recommending that shredded paper be recycled, you might want to do some further checking because 50% of the people say, "Don't do it," 50% of the people say, "Do do it." The difference of opinion is to whether shredded paper is good to be recycled or not. It really screws up the machines, some people say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Boyd. Anybody else?
Good evening again, Ann Loving, Ridgewood. Two things. The first is, I believe I understood that there's going to be a celebration that the village is going to participate in regarding the 10-year anniversary of Health Barn. Did I understand that correctly, that we would participate in that? Or contribute?
Yes.
I'm just wondering whether other businesses that have 10-year, 15-year, 20-year anniversaries, that we also kick in on their celebrations, because that seems a little bit strange. It's a profit-making organization up there at Health Barn, and like, what about the Daily Treat? What about the Village Tea Shop? What about any number of businesses that celebrate, you know, milestone anniversaries? I think you need to be careful with that. The other thing is, sometimes we get lots of response to public comments, and sometimes we get none. I am going to keep asking the question about whether a policy will be set that members who serve on the council, as well as on boards and committees, have to be paying their taxes. Until I get an answer to that, I'm going to keep asking it. I think you can write that policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Can I...
Yeah, we're not done, we're not done. Mr. Hallaby on hybrid access. Come on down.
Hi, Rurik Hallaby, Village resident. First and foremost, this is a terrific meeting. I was so impressed with the presentation by David Rafkin and Beth, and by Don Cirillo, by Chris, and by Rich Calby. Really, the meeting went so well, and I really, really congratulate the, all of you sitting on the dais, if you will. Secondly, and this is something I'm repeating myself, about something I said in a former meeting, you know, I, too, always complain about the quality of the sound in the courtroom. But I can, yet again, I need to tell you, so that someone, maybe Dylan can mention it to the, the two contractors, if you will, who are looking at it. Listening to the thing at home, the sound is fantastic. I mean, Shabon and Pam and everybody else, the sound carries through 100%, and, and so it must be the acoustics in the room and not the microphones, per se, at least, that's, that's my reading. The last comment I want to make is about the free press. As an American by choice, nothing but nothing, other than the First Amendment as far as free speech, but feel strongly about having a free press, a dynamic press. But I tell you, the fact of life is that the printed newspapers are just dying. It's a fact of life. I mean, in fact, when Gannett first bought the Ridgewood News, yours truly, wrote a letter, which I addressed individually to every one of the directors of Gannett, and sent it by, cost me a fortune, to send it by UPS to Gannett's headquarters, telling them about the importance of a free press. Regretfully, and I've worked so hard with the Dan Disforza and with the various writers for the Ridgewood News, but I tell you, there's nothing to read in that paper. Now, out in Shelter Island, we have the Shelter Island Reporter, which is a fantastic paper, and I compliment them all the time, and they're, they really do what the Ridgewood News should be doing. But for whatever reason, it's, it's something that's dead, and it's being replaced. I mean, Tappan to Ridgewood has been doing a fantastic job covering the news and covering the various items. So, in a way, it's one thing to be sad, and Pam, I feel your, your pain here, because I agree with you totally about the importance, but it's a fact of life which we have to respect the reality and say, it's something that belongs to the past and not to the future. But anyway, to repeat myself, the meeting was great, and you guys did a fantastic job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rurik. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment, and we will entertain a resolution to go into closed session.
Mayor, I have a couple of comments if I may.
Excuse me, I'm jumping ahead, it's late, forgive me.
To Mr. Loving, the North Walnut Parking Lot Project, 132 Franklin Avenue, is a village-funded project. The capital was approved by prior administration, I can get you the date tomorrow, I have a list of it here, I don't have the date that the ordinance was adopted, but this project has been a long time coming. The funding had been put in place, and it was a natural, it was an easy, natural decision to undergo this project while 120 was going on simultaneous. So that, that's where the timing came into it, but this was funded by prior administration. That's number one. Number two, there is a policy in place when it comes to the future pavilion at Habernacle. And I've said it from this dais before, and I'm going to say it again tonight, so hopefully it won't be a reoccurring issue at the, at the podium, but Health Barn will be treated like any other community group who requests to use the pavilion facility. The policy's there, there does not need to be a special policy for Health Barn. They will be treated like anyone else, the Boy Scouts, woman gardeners, any group in town that wants to use it, they'll make the request through the Recreation Department, and they will be considered like everyone else. With regard to city water, I don't know where the inference comes from that we're forcing anybody or looking to force anybody to hook up to city water. If you're referencing the four wells that are near the Shedler property, Rich Calby and I had a courtesy meeting where we invited the property owners to come to Ridgewood Water and talk about the possibilities, and whether or not they would be interested or felt compelled to connect to Ridgewood Water. That is an individual property owner's decision, so the ordinance piece is really not relevant. But if a property owner approached us and was looking for a means to sign up to Ridgewood Water, Rich Calby and I are still very open to having that conversation if they would like to pursue that. To Mrs. Loving, with regard to the 10-year anniversary, the council and I get invited to anniversaries and grand openings all the time. My, my calendar couldn't even keep up with going to everyone that we're invited to, usually through Joan Groom and the Chamber of Commerce here in Ridgewood. So to celebrate with Health Barn, and I don't know where the kick-in language came from, but there's no budget appropriation or even a discussion about any budget appropriation relative to Health Barn and their 10-year anniversary, but we get invited to them all the time, and when we're available, we, we attend and partake in that. With regarding to volunteers needing to pay their taxes, first of all, not every resident of Ridgewood pays taxes. If you live in an apartment or you rent, you don't pay property taxes. So I don't know if you're proposing to exclude every renter in Ridgewood, because that's a lot of people, but I also don't believe that it's lawful, and I'm not the attorney, the man to my right is, but I think we would lose in a court challenge if we tried to exclude somebody, anybody, or any municipality tried to exclude somebody because of non-payment of taxes from volunteering on an unpaid board in the, in the village. Matt, I, you can opine on that better than I can, but my experience is that would not hold up in a court of law.
Yeah, just real briefly, first of all, to just say that you can't be on a, you can't volunteer your time for a municipality or any governmental entity because you don't timely pay taxes is, is one thing. When you say they don't, sorry, when you say that they don't pay taxes, people pay taxes late. Does that mean they cannot be on it, on a, on a committee because they haven't paid taxes immediately and they've let some arriage get together, then they pay it off later on? So there really wouldn't be any mechanism, I don't think, that, I mean, I've never looked at it, but it just doesn't make sense legally, a mechanism that would prevent people from volunteering on ad hoc committees and the like, that if we had a policy in place and somebody challenged it, it might withstand a challenge. If you want me to look at it, I can, but I would just say it's not necessarily a...
And I just wanted to go on to a point that you had raised, Keith, on 132, that's where the municipal bond, but on 120, which is the town garage...
120 is on the, is on the back of the former property owner.
Right. The, the prior property owner, there is, part of the agreement when we purchased it is that they put money in escrow to pay for the cleanup of the contamination of that site. So that is definitely not on the backs of the taxpayers. Anybody else?
Yes. It was as early as 2015 that Evan and I were working on a grant application for the 132 Franklin Avenue site to clean it up then. And at that point, the council had already set aside about $900,000 for the cleanup.
So this goes back, way back to...
Yeah, it really does.
Many previous councils.
Yeah. We were just waiting for the right time to do this cleanup. And then as, Boyd, recycling shredded paper is not just a thought in the offing. The recycling coordinator told me today, "We do recycle shredded paper already," and she said it's on our website. So you can recycle it in Ridgewood.
Anybody else?
I, I wanted to say two things. With regard to access to any public park, we, the full council believes in equal access, and we're very mindful of it. In addition to that, we have invested in a software that would not allow anybody to overbook a facility or a location. There'd be a red flag. Master Library has allowed us to coordinate and do all that. And lastly, Stacy is a partner, so I can't imagine she would want to do that. That would seem not in line with her beliefs or her mission statement or how she would run her business. I also want to echo, we go to an enormous amount of anniversaries celebratory, first this, last that. It is, it is hectic celebrating all the good things in our village. So that's that. And lastly, I just want to say with the, the taxes, I think we need to be mindful of families that, like mine. Mike and I pay taxes, my adult children do not, and my mother does not. And we start making rules about taxpayers, we're going to box out multi-generational families, renters, and it can seem really exclusionary. You know, back when I was a kid, county commissioners used to be called freeholders, and they were called that because they held land free and clear. And that's not a good name, and it wasn't a good way to elect an official. So for me, I would be hesitant to have that discussion because I think you want to have families remain multi-generational and support that, and I think you need to be careful with making statements regarding who pays taxes and who doesn't, because we need volunteers. And I'm very grateful to everybody who sits on my board, whether they rent, they live with their daughter, however they got to be a volunteer, I'm grateful for them.
For those exact reasons that Councilmember Winograd just outlined, I would be very reluctant to ask the council to, to consider moving on such a proposal.
Anybody else? And with that, we will now entertain a resolution to go into closed session.
Okay. Be resolved by the Village Council of Village of Ridgewood, that the Village Council meet in closed session on February 26, 2025, at 7:30 PM, or sooner after, if a matter in the agenda can be reached, and that closed session be held in the Sydney V. Stolt Junior Courtroom of the Ridgewood Village Hall, 131 North Maple Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey. Be further resolved that the matters to be discussed in closed session are limited to legal matters to include tax appeals and personnel matters to include village prosecutor. These matters are allowable under NJAS 10 colon 4 dash 12, etc. And be further resolved, as admitted to this meeting, shall be made available to the general public when such matters have been deemed completed by resolution of the Village Council. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.